All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call.
McKnight. Myers.
Here.
Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment on agenda items?
Yes, I have Jolie Madalino.
Yes.
Yep, you can stand and talk.
Okay. It was sooner than I thought. This is to say thank you for being there. Thank you for helping us and giving us born. And on behalf of all the residents of Asbury Manor, I wanted to thank you for coming over to the park. Your support means a lot to us. We ask that you continue supporting us by hosting a meeting with RIGUS so we can talk to them directly. As you know, they continue to ignore us. All we wanted is to communicate, to address the problems in the park. We also ask that you hold meetings to discuss what city council can do, deal with the lightness conditions of the park possibly, if possible. And any help you can provide us during all this, we appreciate. And thank you very much for going out in the cold, in that weather, and also the pet spots that we had to take you through. Thank you.
Thanks, Jolie. Thanks, Patty. That is all?
Okay.
Um, notice of executive session meetings?
None.
All right, uh, proof of minutes, March 11th, 2025. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Um, March 18th, 2025. Can I have a motion?
So move.
A second. Discussion. Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Communications.
None.
Uh, manager's report? Sorry.
I don't have anything at this time.
Um, all right. Old business. Um, ordinance first and second reading zoning amendment dwellings. Can I have a motion to approve the first reading?
So move.
A second.
Discussion.
All right, I guess I'll take away. Okay, so, uh, we've gone over this a bit before. Uh, Councilman Monroe had given you some of this commentary after the previous meeting. He also gave some more commentary to us and another request to have any feedback that you have delivered individually so we could colleague them and bring them to you here. Um, I've let Councilman Monroe deal with his commentary and then I can reply with what the discussion has been with the planning commission and myself for why the ordinance was brought before you in the form that it was in the first place. I also have to apologize because I think in this whole thing, I was burying the lead on this. Um, about two years ago, um, when we were preparing for the council's request for a housing plan, I had questioned a number of colleagues at the planning commission and elsewhere that if you had to start from scratch with no precedent, what would be the minimum dignified housing? The minimum standards for dignified housing that you would set as the baseline? And I did not get a satisfactory answer from back then. It was a question that has been left unresolved, but it is often up to zoning to resolve that. I understand from council that that comes up quite a lot, that we are to defend what is the minimum dignified housing for our residents. So that's, if there's any question why this should be coming up now, it's to resolve that issue because there are different interpretations of what that is and who that should apply to and what circumstances. Uh, I would also caution.
Sorry, can I add an historical piece? I think my recollection too is that when we were looking to update our zoning ordinance overall, I believe the county planning commission recommended that we include accessory dwelling units, and at the time we did not.
That's correct.
That was however many years ago we started that process as well.
I will caution, I thank Mr. Jones for his commentary. From a planning perspective, I would, I would amend that what you said is that the purpose of zoning is not purely for economic development or for the protection of property values. That is often how it is used, but for it to be a constitutional exercise of the city's police powers to find somebody and to have them do permits and to limit their rights of what they do on their own land and their own property, it has to have also some tangible bearing to health, safety, and general public welfare. So, uh, keep that in mind as you get into this discussion. Even the, uh, United States Supreme Court, village of Euclid versus Amber Realty Company, in its support of things like single-family residence zones and said that such things are tied most securely to the nuisances that would be imposed upon families by other things like non-residential uses or tall apartment buildings. But that case also solidified the constitutionality of zoning, even though it reduces people's property values. That was the actual case at bar. Is whether reducing people's property values was constitutionally under zoning? And the US Supreme Court said yes. So, health, safety, public, general welfare. That's from my seat, the origin. Everything else can be added to that base. So, just. Mr. Rob, please.
Yeah.
I have some suggested modifications and concerns to the zoning ordinance. We have defined floor area in section one definitions as a habitable area with a height in less than six feet. And I think that needs to be changed to seven feet.
Yeah, Jim, I was wondering about that. Is that because like, you know, when you get a slanted roof maybe, where there'd be a minimum, you know, I have like, you know what I mean?
There, there is, okay. Currently, they're using the ANSI, American National Standards Institute way of measuring. The jury's still out on that. But for appraising and brokerage, they're using that standard. And they account for areas that have, uh, sloped roofs. So the whole thing doesn't have to be, but you have to have, uh, at least seven feet in a particular area for it to count.
Yep. Yet the six feet was carried over straight from the old 1994 ordinance. That part wasn't changed, it was just left in there. It's right for appraisal purposes, they count those living areas with the ceiling height of seven feet. And as you're right as well, when there's sloped, uh, areas, I believe, in finished, like things like finished addicts and so on, that at least 50% of the area has to be, um, seven feet or higher. Our reference in the International Residential Code is that habitable space, hallways, and portions of basements containing spaces shall have a ceiling height of not less than seven feet. Bathrooms, toilet rooms, laundry rooms shall have a ceiling height of not less than six feet eight inches. Exceptions for rooms with sloped ceilings, the required floor area of the room shall have a ceiling height of not less than five feet and not less than 50% of the required floor area shall have a ceiling height of not less than seven feet. So, in the reference, uh, back to our International Residential Code that we have to, you know, do for building permitting. Yeah. It's to go by their standards, you can include those areas that are under seven, under seven feet under those circumstances. Just wasn't lifted wholesale from the IRC into our zoning code. So however you choose to, you know, define that. Jim, do you remember why it was six feet in the first place?
No, I don't remember that.
Okay.
But.
I'm sorry, I'm, just for clarification, are you talking about the, the floor area?
Yeah.
Definition? So I'm reading the mention of six feet as, um, it says excluding any space where the floor ceiling height is less than six feet. So we're saying that that area would not count as habitable?
That area would not count.
Right, so anything that is less than six feet would not actually count?
Yeah.
But to be sure that there is no misunderstanding, because I believe our building inspection, our rental inspection, pegs the minimum ceiling height at seven feet.
Just because it's International Property Maintenance Code, is that what you're saying? They're not like the Internet?
For whatever reason, but that's, that's the standard they're using. So I'm suggesting that we at least be consistent so that someone doesn't build a house and have a, a floor area on a sloped roof of six feet, because that, that just isn't high enough.
Yeah, but it does say that in that next paragraph, as described in applicable building code, so. Isn't that covered? Right below one two, Jim. See how it says, like, it sounds like that would be the code that.
Where are you, what are you talking about?
Just right below that, under floor area.
Yeah.
And item two.
So there are the two definitions of floor area subject here. There's the gross floor area, which includes all of those that are not considered habitable entirely. And then there's when referring to habitable floor area, means all those as described by things in IRC. So that's a, that's a good catch for that.
Yeah.
Two different standards.
Yeah.
In one standard, for instance, like a stairwell with this sloped ceiling of seven feet would be included in gross floor area because it's a floor area that's part of the house, but you don't live in your stairwell. So.
Which is why I also recommended that you eliminate section one definition two in its entirety. Because again, in the industry, in real estate and appraising and construction, if you go by exterior square footage, so if you have a 24 by 40 house on a foundation, one story, it's a 960 square foot home. The difference is significant because, well, I explain it later on. Basically, there's about a 21% difference between gross floor area and habitable floor area as you've described. And so a 680, or 648 square feet of habitable area really translates into about 830 square feet.
Where are you right now, Jim?
Uh. Right now, we're on page two, uh, floor area, item two. Okay, so I'm suggesting that that be removed in its entirety and that we go with the standard of exterior dimensions. And for one and a half story homes and homes with dormers, the ANSI standards take care of, take care of that difference. But this is a standard way of calculating.
I guess for me, I'm concerned about making sure that someone doesn't build a house and then it's really their storage area. And I think that the way the ordinance is written, it addresses that. It's like this is habitable and only you have it specified, like this percentage cannot be the gross, you know, for other things.
Okay, to illustrate the point, if you were building a home today, you would probably have six inch walls. Okay, so if a 24 by 40 home, okay, it's 960 square feet. That's what you're paying for when you have it built. But you have to deduct the perimeter, in this case, 40, 40, 24, 80 times, 120 times a half a foot. So you already lost 60 square feet just in the interior perimeter versus the exterior perimeter. Uh, every wall inside is going to probably be four inches, or four inches thick. And if you use this definition, you're going to be deducting that. It's finished area. It's finished, it's drywalled, it's heated, it's plumbed, it has electric. And even, uh, even talking closets. You need a closet for lighting, but you're excluding all those. So you're going to have a problem with interpretation and you're going to end up driving up the cost a little bit more for everyone.
People who are choosing to build an accessory dwelling unit, that's everyone. Um, so I'm sorry, Jim, are you, it's, I, I feel like I'm, I'm hearing you argue for, um, measurements on the outside, but almost, I, I feel like what you articulated to me is an argument for measurement, like measuring the habitable floor area. Because it takes into account, right, like the, from the exterior insulation utility.
With your house, you have dormers.
You don't know what I'm saying, I'm just getting going.
Yeah, I do.
I know you do, that's what's here.
I played that house when I was a kid. You have dormers which may or may not be as wide as the first floor. Uh, and in a case like that, you would take the exterior dormers and add that into, uh, the space at seven feet or above. The lower space, again, there's a way of handling that. But you would still do it even for the second floor based to an extent on exterior measurements. You wouldn't be deducting for hallways, stairwells, closets, utility rooms, and so forth, which are integral. Now, I'm not talking about below grade, I'm talking about above grade construction. You wouldn't be counting the laundry room in the basement as finished square footage. But if it's on the first floor, it would be.
So we have a discrepancy between what the real estate industry and appraisers use when they're describing properties using gross living area. They're describing it by the area as measured from the outside of the house. The definitions used by the International Residential Code and the International Building Code are for habitable space. Sorry, you want me to read all this?
It's a space you can inhabit. It's the space you would live at, you actually. Right, but you wouldn't live in the walls.
The minimum standard.
Like, so like, it makes sense to me, I think, to measure from the inside out.
The residential code.
Though I understand the, you know, the industries.
Requires a minimum dimension for habitable space of being not less than 70 square feet and not less than seven feet in any dimension as measured from the inside of the walls of a building. So already there's a discrepancy of how that's translated from the building code to how it is then later described in the real estate industry.
Right. But we enforce building code, right? So I think like, we've got a closer connection to building code than, than necessarily to the.
Right, which is why for most of these things, just for future reference, I'll probably, you know, think it up, then check against our building code.
Right.
And try to get them as, match as close as possible without plagiarizing, uh, the building code. So what's, there's, it gets even more complicated, but I believe it helps for all we learn. There's also the gross floor area, which the IBC calls the floor area within the inside perimeter of the exterior, inside perimeter of the exterior walls of the building under construction, exclusive of vents, shafts, and quartz, without deduction for corridors, stairways, ramps, closets. So the gross floor area is still also the inside perimeter of the exterior walls. And then the building area is the entire footprint on the lot of that. So because the origination of the ordinance was to figure out and settle what is the minimum standards for livable space to afford people that so-called dignified living? And those standards can change depending on how much outdoor space that you're also having, that you're also allowing. There's a difference between a 350 square foot apartment and a stack of apartments where you have no light and fresh air, and a 350 square foot apartment where you have your own courtyard and a rich public life to enjoy. So that's the question for us, and that's why the choice of going with habitable space was.
I mean, I'm comfortable with the way it's drafted, the way the planning commission distributed.
Jim?
You want me to go on?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, section, on page three, section three, A4. Again, I'm recommending that you remove the term minimal habitable floor area and remove 401 square foot minimum. I don't know where we came up to 401 feet.
International Residential Code has a different section, appendix AQ, dedicated to tiny houses. And tiny house is defined as a single-family building with a floor area of 400 feet or less. So that is one of the, that extra one foot is to avoid, which between, I mean personally, I find to be a hateful phrase, tiny house. But it means that all the construction standards would be for regular, you know, light frames, stick built, everything IVC, and not for the other changes that they have for things like tiny houses or, you know. The IRC is now adding things for shipping container construction, which I don't, I think is a bridge too far for this council.
So you could change the wording slightly to say, shall exceed 400 square feet instead of 401.
Yeah.
You could.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, I'm substituting gross living area for minimum habitable. And I am recommending you increase the gross living area in this case to four, 640 square feet.
Okay, so that would be to remove all special exceptions for building below 640 square feet?
That would have the effect.
Okay, so 640 square feet is Councilman Monroe's floor for, um, a, in this case, it would be a detached, single-family building. Sorry, when I say floor, I don't mean floor area, oh my gosh, so confusing already.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Minimum, minimum.
It's the minimum.
Lowest end of his range of tolerance. Right, and what, but what's put in front of us is a minimum habitable floor area, 648 square feet when permitted by right. Special exception for anything between 401 and 640.
And the choice between 648 was just because it's divisible by three and four. That's all.
Which is relevant.
What's relevant about that?
It depends on if you have your stud spacing between 12 inches or 16 inches or any other things so that it's easily divisible, it's divisible by 16, or it goes into 16, 40.5 times.
Multiplied by 12 and divided by 16.
Yeah.
Section three, C1, the single lot requirement. And again, I'm thinking in this term more of cottage court, I have a property in mind. We have, there are two vacant lots for sale adjacent to each other. There is a house immediately next door to it that probably should be raised. But there are three lots. If you have one on each lot, you couldn't have a college or cottage court development, whereas if you let, if you allow them to break lot lines, you could still have the cottage court development with the common area. And if they wanted to convert into a single lot, they could, although you're gonna use, you're probably gonna lose some stormwater management fees in that case.
One of the issues that we've had problems with, the county has alerted us to, is how many, uh, properties held in tax claim in such situations prevent either usable sale of the properties such in that situation? If you have three lots, supposedly you have a lease agreement where they share the common open space and maybe the driveway to the cottage courts crosses those lots. And then one of the lots becomes delinquent on its taxes, which subjects it to tax claim sale in complacence title and the rights of access to that common open space for the others. So, um, it hasn't happened here very often, but it has happened in other portions. And, and I've seen it elsewhere in the county. And the county's own advice, which has been incorporated into the not conforming lots section of our current zoning ordinance, is that if you're going to have a single development, that development be on a single lot of record so the whole title is unified and that, and not broken up and creating such issues like that. So that was the justification for that.
So it didn't do what it takes to, cost-wise, do you need to have a survey and go through zoning?
It actually depends on if you have an existing allotment map on record or not. If you have an existing allotment map on record that has bearings and distances, you can pretty much do that by a subdivision, a tracing of that and a re-description of the property. And indeed, you might not even have to restake or resurvey. It, it's circumstantial.
So, but you're saying a process where if there's a few vacant lots that are next to each other and someone wanted to develop a college court, for them to essentially kind of confine those, those lots so that they could kind of develop a whole thing as one?
Right, without going through a little bit of extra cost.
Right.
Again, you're maybe talking a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, give or take.
To, to go through this subdivision?
This is just my personal worry. When I look at the tax maps, uh, I see, even in our previous zoning ordinance, I think they allowed, it allowed you to have a development that, like a single development that was on many lots of record. And like, for instance, the old Sandy's lot has 15 separate lots of record that they built over, of which any one of them could be subject of some problem in title. Or maybe, uh, we just, in this position, as a pencil pusher, we'd really like cleanliness when it comes to land records. So that was the reasoning behind that.
I talked to you about, a little bit about habitable floor, floor areas. We won't go through that again. But again, I assume that you're referring to a guy, a guideline or a reg about the 648 square feet or the 640 square feet.
I'm personally indifferent to what it is, you know, give or take a few feet here or there. I was just trying to make something divisible by three and, you know, four.
Yeah, and I'm doing it by 12 and 16, yeah. But it, it amounts to the same thing. You don't have to saw halfway through a, to a stud section in order to make it fit. And the same is true of concrete blocks. You'll have an even number or a, a, a dimension of concrete blocks that you don't have to cut in thirds or halves or whatever.
So we're talking about the habitable floor area is the interior, right? And so the exterior, right, like those dimensions?
I would also caution them when it comes to, uh, construction standards. A lot of these, uh, things would be nice and tidy until you try to put in a door or a window, which would require the extra framing.
Which is required, right?
Yes. So if, I believe that both Jim and I are talking about what marginal costs can be taken. And my personal belief is that whatever developer will come in, and I say developer, it could just be somebody who wants to like divide up some of their house into a duplex. You know, that doesn't mean an appraiser or real estate involved. They're just like, ah, house is too big, I live in a duplex district, let's have a duplex. is too big, I live in a duplex district, let's have a duplex. Yeah, there are different standards, you know, a lot of this pertains to the life-frame construction rather than masonry construction where your stud spacing can unload bearing walls, can, you know, you can do metal studs to frame out with your gypsum board. So I'm just trusting that a developer who looks at this will not be trying to build to the minimum, but see what the minimum is and then round up to next, what's next easiest. So, then again, why I haven't built a house yet.
I did, well, I'll use my own home as an example, square footage-wise. In a thousand fifty-six square-footed home, we'd have habitable floor area about 820 square feet. So you're talking about 200 square foot difference at maybe $200 building cost per square foot. So you've just cost somebody an extra $40,000 to get to the habitable area as opposed to the gross living area. In other words, you have to build gross to get net. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Yes, well, I mean, yeah, we need walls. Then the question remains, that's an 820-foot, not a 1056, 1056 for a living area, 820-foot square foot habitable floor area, but what is the minimum of habitable floor area to begin with?
That's what I'm saying. If you calculated it out for new construction, there's about a 22% reduction. So if you're saying, I have to have a floor area of, I'm using this because it's here, 821 square feet, then I am actually buying or paying for a 1056 square foot home.
Right, including all the area of exterior walls.
Including all the area of exterior walls.
Right.
Whereas if you, if you say, I need an 800 square foot house that, and use gross living area, you're getting an 800 square foot house.
With, I don't know, 620 feet of habitable floor area according to our code, so. Just to clarify.
Again, I didn't want to live in a house without a bathroom, but we're not counting it as a habitable area.
Yeah, it needs a bathroom. I just, I don't know about you, sometimes in some mornings I live in my bathroom, but that's not what our code implies.
Couple other things.
You're welcome.
And I've sent Mary Ann and Peter some additional concerns. I am recommending that we remove the accessory dwelling unit as a use in the residential zone. If you want to experiment with ADUs, consider it an experiment and see how it works in other zones before you go into residential. Zoning is supposed to promote homogeneity of use, not of residence, of use. And if you have small homes, which are going to end up being rented, then you've changed the character of the neighborhood from residential to mixed-use 1 and mixed-use 2.
I think we've discussed that point. I don't think that that's a consensus in council in the election.
I did send everybody a picture of a small home. I thought it was kind of nice. And it was 640 square feet, by the way.
Habitable floor area?
Measured from the outside.
Yeah, exactly.
If you're going to do this, we probably should figure out what types of ADUs are permitted. I mean, Peter just referred to the shipping container homes, which I don't think we But are we going to permit manufactured homes? That's not, that's what we used to call mobile homes. Or are we going to permit double Y, not double Ys, but modular homes, like Lake City? There's this difference. Modular homes comply with building codes, the, what we call manufactured homes comply with, they're a HUD seal, there's a seal on each unit, saying, and it usually match if you have a double Y or triple Y. Saying it complies to certain HUD standards, but those are not local building code standards. So that's something I think before we try to act on it, we need to have that discussed. Also ratios of width and length. And if you're going to allow manufactured homes, make sure that you remove trailer tongues and wheel axle assemblies. And finally, the, what kind of foundation? Are you looking at concrete slabs? Are you looking at full concrete perimeter crawl space?
Yeah, so for everybody's edification, the municipality's planning code still calls them mobile homes, whatever HUD defines them as. Manufactured homes, mobile homes. We use mobile homes in Zonin Desk because that's what the MPC says, but manufactured homes, they're the same thing. The proposed ordinance says that even though they're called accessory dwelling units, only because they are accessory to an existing single-family home on a lot, they are to be permitted in the same manner as a principal use, and because they are a dwelling, they would have to abide by our building codes. The modular homes, like from Lake City homes, they're fine everywhere. It's just a house shipped in, fine, but it meets local building codes. There's no construction or provision on them in any district when other, any other house is as a manufactured home, as a construction type, that would still, under the present ordinance, be located only in mobile home parks, of which there's just Asbury Manor. They would not be allowed as a permitted construction type in any other park of the city, whether it's residential district, mixed-use 1, mixed-use 2, because that type is already excluded there. It has to be stick-built, meaning the International Residential Code, which also, even if you have it on concrete footings, would require some sort of, I think it's called a football wall. Otherwise, the IRC says it's either slab-on-grade basement for crawl space. So there would be no pilings, and I believe the mobile home placement permit that we have would also require of all the fixtures that makes the mobile home continuously transportable rather than fixed in place. Short answer, no mobile home ADUs in any district as currently written. I've confirmed that with Justin as well, and he would, he would, he would basically say no. But let it be known, modular houses, go for it.
Right, and we have some, right? Pine Street, the Housing Coalition, they were formerly Army Coalition Properties, they're modular homes.
I think we have, we have some Washington Street and Willow Street.
Yeah.
There's a, Jim brings up a good point about the width and length ratios. You may also feel that the protection's built to the special exceptions about trying to fit in smaller houses than are, you know, the, we have the houses by special exception smaller than 658 square feet. The special exception standards include standards that are made to imitate, to preserve the character of the area. Perhaps those standards are not as acceptably stringent to ADUs, given Councilman Roa's question here about what ratios are appropriate, because, again, based, from the beginning, it's supposed to be legitimate that, the care, the earlier origination of this as a form-based code and maintaining the character of a community for health, safety, general welfare purposes, and orderly development of the city, means that you don't have a 50-foot-wide garage next to a 15-foot-wide house. Same thing, I believe that's an analogy for ADUs as well. So.
Do you have any other questions? Peter, you said you were going to talk about like the Planning Commission and their review of the ordinance that's in front of us.
Oh, yeah.
Planning Commission, where are you at?
Yeah, they recommended SS.
Yeah, Planning Commission recommends SS, and I know has been sitting with this for a long time.
Yeah, and I believe also spoke at public comment a couple meetings ago.
So to be clear, this, this issue is not coming to us tonight.
It is, we're in first and second reading.
No, no, no. I mean, we have been thinking, the Planning Commission has had it, the county has had it, we've been sitting on it, you've been writing it, we've been looking at it for months and months and months, so that's why it's here. Yeah, in years, because we just redid the zoning and adding this because it's.
Yeah, I believe early 2024, I said that the zoning ordinance is, continues to be a work in progress, there are outstanding questions. This is one of those outstanding questions from two years ago. If what's before you does not answer that question well enough for you, you can take more time to it, and if any of you would like to, you know, it's your right to move on any of the changes based on what we've discussed before for reading as well. It's just, so far, I've done as much as I can for my part, and now it's up to you and your values.
Right. Yeah, I'm comfortable with it as it is.
I am, I believe in our planning commission and the fact that it's been reviewed by the county and the, right, like, so, all right, roll call.
An ordinance of the city of Meville, Cropper County, Pennsylvania, amending Articles 1302, 1303, 1305, and 1306 to provide for new forms of residential dwelling units, to provide revised minimum standards of habitability in terms of floor area and open space, to provide an option for special, special exception to construct single-family dwellings below a threshold of floor area subject to criteria to encourage the form of the surrounding neighborhood to remain intact and providing for the effective date of severability and repealer. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Motion to approve second reading zoning amendment dwellings. I need a motion.
No, I will move, I will make the motion.
I get it. Discussion. Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Motion, please.
Discussion Asbury Manor walkthrough.
Can we, can we do the walkthrough next? Because I think people are here for that, and then we move to the other one.
Council attended a tour of Asbury Manor last week. I was able to go with that edification committee meeting with Gretchen, but if council has anything they want to report out or discuss, we could do that.
I'm grateful that you invited us. Thanks for having us out there. I think it was helpful for us to see, I know county officials were there too, all of council was there. I was glad that Nick Sherpolich prepared it. Yeah, you know, we hear this stuff, but it was, it was important to see, and I think Paul showed a video too, to a few of us, I think you saw it, Jim, of like, one of our brand-new-to-us ambulances trying to navigate the potholes of that space and like, just they, they had to slow down, and I just saw like, our, I mean, there's, there's also, right, like, there's, there's, there's real habitability issues going on there too, and like, you could see the real impacts on like our city infrastructure in front of our eyes. I heard in what Jolie asked for today, like mediated conversation, are we able to, can we do that?
Yeah, like I said before, the owners of Asbury have been really responsive to code enforcement, so we can attempt to reach out to them, to schedule a meeting between the owners and at least a few tenant representatives.
I have a question. Because it's private property, we're not supposed to be on it without permission, but I was looking at the county GIS map, I'm not saying it's accurate, but it shows Lyons Street as extending into the park, so I don't know if code enforcement could get in that way. And I guess the other question is, are drones considered invasion? Do you have to be somebody feet high, or?
Okay, so to answer the first question, we would need to know, just because the street is named the same, I don't know which portions of it would be publicly dedicated and which portions of it would be privately dedicated. That is something that'd have to be looked at. Secondly, code enforcement can get on the property through the invitation of a property owner, if a prop, excuse me, a lesser, a lessee. If that lessee gives sufficient information for the code enforcement officer to believe that a violation of an ordinance is occurring, then we would have reasonable cause to go on the property and inspect that. So I believe that there's enough lessees, lot renters, who are willing to share that information and invite somebody on, that we could handle that. And I know that we've requested that information be provided to us in writing so that we can sign that form to receive that written permission to be on the property, to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for a situation. Secondly, with respect to the drones, I've had cases in other municipalities and other counties thrown out because people are using drones. I don't believe that it's gone all the way up through the appellate courts yet to have good law, but my, my advice is that property maintenance enforcement through drone is, or inspection through drone, is likely a invasion of privacy.
So it's, the game is not worth the candle.
The juice is not worth the squeeze.
So if we went in and did inspect it, if it's determined it was like a nuisance or blighted, can we then proceed, like with a hearing?
We will proceed with standard enforcement procedures as we have. It's my understanding that we've sent notices to the property owner in the past on property maintenance enforcement, they've been responsive to those, and those are the tools that we have available to us. So we will just continue to utilize those.
Just to dig into those a little more, I think, just my understanding, right, I think there's the kind of like relational issues that you're seeing, like the increases in rent and the lack of communication from, from the landlord. There's also, I think, some stuff in your lease that you have reason to think is illegal. I think the extent to what we can do there feels like just mediating that conversation. There's the physical, there's the like conditions of the property, right, the potholes and roads conditions, utility lines, flooding, vacant and blighted trailers. And I'm wondering, like, on that, on those physical pieces, like, if we can like understand more what our options are for those, like, you know, we have the blighted property review committee, does that play a role? We passed the public nuisance ordinance, is there something new there? Like conservatorship, like what are the, I know we've got these tools, I guess I just don't necessarily, I'm hoping to understand more, like, how those tools might come into play for those.
So I think you really want to take a look at your property maintenance enforcement and the work that's being done there. I mean, that's, the International Property Maintenance Code was adopted by the city, I believe, and that's the document that we use to set the code standards. That procedure is, without pulling up and getting into the specifics, but generally it's a code enforcement officer shows up, they take a look at the, they take a look at the, at the issue. If it is a violation, they can send a violation notice. You have a certain period of time that you're given in order to fix it, and then if it's not fixed, then enforcement proceedings can begin after that point. It's very similar to the procedures that we would have in the nuisance ordinance, because those are standard due process procedures that are associated with code inspection, code enforcement.
Okay. I guess what I don't understand, and this is maybe a larger issue, is like what is the sequence of events and like this, when we would use those tools and the toolbox that we've got? But maybe that's another conversation.
So I think that they, the owners have to be given an opportunity due to due process to correct the actions and go through and exhaust all of those things like extensions and whatnot. So for the potholes, they were cited for those, given notices of violations, they asked for and were granted an extension until June to fix those potholes. Uncertain right now where the lines that were sticking up, where that is at, those were just, a notice was sent to the owners, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. They would have had some time, but they have to go through and be given the process, the extension options. And then the enforcement actions can begin, so you could look into at that point the nuisance ordinance and invoking that if there's a failure to respond.
So, and this is just along the lines of, you know, public safety, our guys going in, right, like in case there's an emergency. And this is, this is just more on that question, right? In that video, right, our ambulance is going up and down, right? And not just from, you know, we pay for that, right, like that's an investment, but I'm looking more at, right, if there's someone in that ambulance, right? Like, and that's the only way in and out, that is like public safety, that is the safety of someone, right, their life, and it affects our amount of time to get them out, right? What, how does, how does that, I understand, we're gonna, they're gonna fix it, we're gonna, you know, do the thing, but when this, when this happens, right, what can we do to protect, right, human life and it's an actual safety issue when it comes to those things? I navigated that pothole and, you know, it was hairy and I can't imagine if someone was bleeding out, having a heart attack, right, like trying to do that in a high stress. Of course, we've got wonderful people who do that for a living, but, right, you know, should we be putting them through that extra, right? Like, so what, does that change anything? Do we have, you know, more teeth when it comes to something like that? It's kind of what I'm, you know, because a four-minute, you know, turnaround time could turn into five minutes, six, and that's a life, right? Like, so I'm just kind of wondering what that means.
Not much, unfortunately. Under, we're limited by the tools that we have. We don't have any additional allowances for those situations. I think that those items could be taken into consideration if an additional extension was asked for. I mean, I, it makes sense to have an extension for paving concerns when you can't pave because it's cold. But, you know, if they were to come back in June and say, can we have an additional extension for whatever, then information like that could be taken into consideration.
I see, okay.
Is that fair, Marian?
Yes. I'm just, you know, all of these different things, right? I'm just trying to figure out what are. Thank you.
Jolie? It sounds like Regal did fix the water, like a couple of the water leaks, right? And they did send someone to look at potholes and they did hire two residents.
Yeah, the potholes that are broken also have broken water lines under them. So those would have to be addressed before they even pave.
Sure.
Yeah.
The roads are in that federal condition and they all need fixed in some net.
Yeah. But Regal did, like, they took some baby steps. I guess we're wanting to make sure they keep moving. I think, I feel like there was some movement in terms of like fixing some leaks.
I'm thankful that they've given a date to at least come in and do the roads.
Yeah.
Upfront, but they can't do the roads until they fix all those water lines. They need to come here, they need to give it us, they need to face us, face to face and see what's going on. And that's what we're grateful that you have been trying to help us, reach out to them and make them see that.
We also, if I may, just from a legal perspective, we need to be careful because there's, we're balancing the public interest and private property rights.
I understand.
And so I think that we're doing the extent to which our laws permit us to do, to facilitate a meeting with the city and the property owner to have a conversation about the overarching concerns with property maintenance and those items, I think is a reasonable next step in doing that.
To the point that Jolie just made, thank you. And they're doing that because you're putting public pressure on, right? So thanks for doing what we're doing. The water lines there, is that Mawa? Is that, because that's private property, is that the?
They're likely private lines.
Yeah, so they would be private lines, so if they need to be addressed, right, that's an additional thing. That's not something we could like, okay, well, let's get Mawa to look at this so we can kind of expedite the repair and.
The majority of trailer parks that my water entities, clients service, the lines within the park are private lines and it's, there's a master meter and the water comes in through the master meter and the municipal interest is done at that master meter.
Okay.
I'm puzzled though. Some friends did some research and reported to me, and I drove around Saturday, Sunday looking. Four or five trailer parks in the area have rents that are half of what yours are. Anywhere from like $220 to $310 per month. Even if those are off by 100, there's still a significant variance with what you're paying versus anybody else. And I'm wondering if perhaps the owners of the land really are interested in doing anything. I mean, there's like a 34% occupancy.
And if you notice, the other trailer parks are kept up.
Oh, they're kept up better, yeah.
And they care about their homes.
Yeah. By the way, after the meeting, I'd like to talk to some of the owners. I pulled some of your property assessments and some of you may be paying too much in tax.
Awesome, there you go.
Jim's pro bonus service, that's what he does.
I just wanted to clear that we're asking questions because we just don't know, right?
Absolutely.
And we're absolutely happy to know what our next steps are and then, right, what comes after that, just to make sure that that's.
I think city council and the city is being extremely responsive to the issue. I think you're hearing them, you're giving them a forum in which to speak. There is public pressure and public awareness of the issue that is being developed and that's clearly being helpful. And I think that that's, you know, an appropriate role for everyone to be playing. I just don't want to be in a situation where the city is accused of interfering in the private leasing, you know, between landlord tenant to that degree without the authority to do so. That's why I'm just raising it, but also setting the expectation for the lot renters, for the lessies, as to where our limits are.
Yes, that's understandable.
And I, just to touch on the last thing, I think it's very clear that with the consensus of council that we support you, right? And we believe that you deserve better living conditions, right? And we believe that the, you know, the values that this council holds are not being up, or Meadville holds in living conditions are not being, right, held up. So we do support you and we are so happy to have you come to us and be able to be there for you.
Yes.
Right? And we will do our best within our powers to help you in any way we can. I think that's pretty clear, but I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that we value you guys.
We will help.
Yeah. Thank you.
To get them here to look at us in their face.
Right.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for listening to us and trying to help us.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Ordinance first and second reading zoning amendment tobacconist.
Do you have anything to add?
There has been no changes to my knowledge since the last time it was discussed and brought before council in March.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion for the first reading?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
What? Do air dancers get grandfathered in? They get. Just kidding. I don't mind. No, really, do they?
But do they? I don't know.
I have my opinions, I believe, and for insurance.
We can't hear you.
Sunshine?
I have my own opinions about that. I feel that Mr. Walker would be able to offer more confidence of opinion than I would as long as he's here.
I don't know the names of the entities that you're talking about, is this the place on Chestnut?
Oh, air dancers are the trade name for those inflatable things. It was spoken a little bit in jest, but it is in the zoning ordinance.
Right.
I'm just wondering if that, I, it's.
And we ask a little bit.
But it is, it is. Well, I'll have to look into the air dancers more specifically.
Okay. They are prohibited over this ordinance.
I know the city like decided that you couldn't have banners, like, because I had a banner and a lot of places put banners on buildings and then you had, and we all had to take our banners down. Like, that wasn't grandfathered down.
Right. If that's it, then.
I'm just, that's, I don't understand, it was just a curiosity, I just remember that, like, there were no banners allowed, you couldn't have a banner hanging. Banners, air dancers.
I will be sure to get back to council with Tim's response on.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay, thanks, sorry, I'm not just doing stories.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I have a question on the first reading.
Sorry. Okay, roll call.
An ordinance of this, yeah, sorry. An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending articles 1302, 1303, and 1305 of the Meadville zoning code, providing for a definition of tobacconist as a distinct form of retail use, providing for tobacconists to operate as special exception in the MU2, MU3, GBM, and the EDC districts, providing standards and criteria that apply to tobacconists as a special exception, and providing for an effective date severability and repealer. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Can I have a motion for the second reading?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Discussion, pollinator gardens?
So, this was brought back before council for discussion again rather than first and second reading. The EAC has reviewed the ordinance and anybody who's actually at the meeting can correct me if I'm wrong on what the recommendations that came out of it were.
I, if we're not in a hurry, might we consider tabling? The EAC was preparing a letter to send to council to summarize thoughts, so if we're okay with holding this conversation later and allow, because they did discuss, but it seems like we did not receive that better? That's what questions. So maybe give them, thanks.
Okay. Another second.
Second.
Okay.
Roa? Over table, I'm sorry.
Yes. Roll call. Yes.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
I move to table the discussion of parking.
All second.
All right.
Roll call.
That's right.
Myers?
We're tabling everything, right? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the parking. Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
I would regret.
Yeah. New business, motion market authority appointments. Can I have a motion to appoint?
I'll move to.
Motion to.
Who are we?
Serena Dograkow. John Fulmer, Seth Ernst, and Alshu Maddox, Rose Giselle, appointment of Serena Dograkow to film.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Roll call. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
I'll just add a note on to the appointment, just as an ABC update in general. The advertisement for the ABC openings has been published and went out. There are a number of openings for seven different ABCs.
That's the list we have here.
Correct.
Correct. So we have two for beautification, one for EAC, one for Mara, one for Mawa, or two for Mawa, excuse me. The planning commission has one, the RDA has one, and zoning hearing board alternate is one. So those are the vacancies that we have, that people can apply for.
And turn in those applications by April 18th.
By April 18th, okay.
Okay. Great. And just, you know, EAC, Environmental Advisory Council, Mara, Meadville Area Recreation Authority oversees the ref complex, Mawa oversees, is the water authority, RDA is the redevelopment authority.
Yes.
To de-bystify the acronyms.
Right, sorry.
You're good.
Um, thank you, Marian, for putting that out. Okay. Motion for cleanup day, Saturday, May 17th, 2025.
So move.
Second. Discussion?
As you've probably seen, published in papers, a lot of municipalities are coming out with their scheduled cleanup days, so thought is prudent to also schedule the city's cleanup day for Saturday, May 17th. This is the week after Allegheny's graduation. This will coincide with the beautification committee's cleanup week, which we are working with on, could coordinate with them on how this is going to go this year. We've learned some lessons from last year on cleanup week, try to implement those lessons this year.
To be clear, it's available to Meadville residents.
Correct.
And it's a truck or carload for $10?
$10.
With an ID or, can you prove your residency?
Yes, and we will work with the Hope Initiative again to prove the fifth ward cleanup.
And that, just, I, the Meadville proper residents.
Correct. Meadville.
And what about people who own properties that they're cleaning up, which benefits us? In other words, if you own a property and you don't live in town.
I believe we have made exceptions in the past for such things, yes.
Charge them double. But take their advantage.
Does anybody have any other questions? Roll call.
Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Do you need us to volunteer for that? Sorry, is there?
We would love to see the beautification committee especially volunteer for that, but any volunteers are accepted.
Okay. Thank you. No, no problem. Resolution, transfer of liquor license from Summit Township to the city of Meadville. Can I have a motion?
So move.
All right, one second. Discussion?
I think they've all left at this point, but John Swig, Rob Smith were here, covered basically what this is about, they're no longer eligible for an economic development license, now need to go the traditional route of a license, liquor license transfer from Summit Township into the city limit.
So to be clear, because this was what I asked, right? The way that it is worded, it kind of sounds like they're ineligible and then they found a license, when in turn, the fact is, is the license being available is what makes them ineligible for the.
Correct.
Right, okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, roll call.
A resolution of the city of Meadville, county of Crawford Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving the transfer of retail liquor license number R-19828 into the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, from Summit Township, Crawford County, Pennsylvania. Myers?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Okay, public comment on non-agenda items?
Yes, I have Mr. McCrally.
It's that time of year again. Sneaks up on me every year, but the last time you guys had a meeting was actually during Sunshine Week. Sunshine Week, for everybody who doesn't know, is a week devoted to transparency and openness in government, and it's time to coincide with the birthday of James Madison, who is best remembered today as the father of the American Constitution. And I make a habit of speaking at meetings whenever they will let me, to remind everybody of the. of the anniversary and the celebration and the importance of openness and transparency in government. And the particular pet peeve that I focus on is executive sessions, which is when bodies like this one meet in secret, behind doors, closed doors, out of view of the public that elected them and empowers them, and discuss stuff that often should be discussed in private. However, Pennsylvania state law requires that when bodies like this one do that, that they make meaningful, concrete, discrete, specific explanations of the nature of those discussions. And often, they, I'm not picking on you guys in particular, this happens across the state, often those explanations are completely insufficient and could easily be explained at greater length. And in fact, when I ask about them, they often are explained, but they should be done, that should happen in public without people having to ask for it. So I make a reminder about that every year. And I was thinking about it this year because I hear lists of executive session explanations that typically sound like real estate personnel litigation. And it just occurred to me that it's like, when you hear an explanation like that, first of all, it doesn't mean anything to people at all, real estate, personnel litigation, that could be anything. And you're supposed to be specific, discrete, and so on. And it made me think that explanations like that are like, like you had a coworker who made a big deal about, you know, it's Friday afternoon and they're excited because later that day, they're having a dinner and lots of friends are coming over and it's going to be so great, and they're telling you about this. And clearly, you know, they're kind of fishing for a response from you, and so being a normal polite person, you say, wow, that sounds great, what are you guys going to have to eat? And imagine if the response was, food? You being a normal polite person might think to yourself, geez, that's kind of annoying, they built it up. And I kind of expected a more meaningful explanation, and so your response might be, well, I know you're going to have food, but what kind of food are you going to have? And imagine your surprise if they then responded, food, that's all I'm required to say. You might think, well, geez, they're kind of being obtuse about that, and it would be easy to explain what food exactly is on the menu, but they're not required to explain that, so you're probably not going to go to that dinner. So, thinking about that a little bit more, I was required, I was reminded of a housing authority meeting that I attended recently, and during the remarks from the public at the beginning of the meeting, I heard a passionate exhortation from a member of the public who was calling on board members to step up and do a better job when it comes to transparency and communication. And then quoting that person directly, she said, what I'm asking is that we hold staff accountable to have an open line of communication. She continued and said, if we don't have a willingness to work together with at least the community and the people providing that, we're going to fail, just like you're doing. Unfortunately, when we're not holding our staff accountable, it's your failure, your failure, she said. Now, I don't know if I would be quite that hardcore, but I thought her point was a good one and her advice was, I think, worth following. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike.
I also have Joe Tompkins.
Thanks.
You're supposed to sign up at the beginning of the meeting.
Sorry.
You're just going to get up there?
My apologies. I appreciate your conversation, your willingness to help the folks at Asbury, I've been working with them, as you know. I guess I'm concerned, the only reason I wanted to comment based on the discussion, I'm a little concerned that we're going to lose the forest for the trees. I appreciate that it's a complicated situation because it's a manufactured home park and there's issues of landlord/tenant, but the big picture here is that there are 54 homes in those two parks, in that neighborhood. 24 of those are vacant. So I want you to imagine any other neighborhood in Meville where 24 or 50 homes were vacant and blighted, and what you'd be trying to do, right? I know you worked really hard, there was a blighted property up on Pine Street, right, a few weeks ago or months ago. I know you went out of your way to try to address that. That was one blighted home. Here we're talking about a neighborhood where 24 or 50 are in terrible shape and abandoned and dilapidated. So that's the big picture that I just want you to keep in mind as you move forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe.
Hi, Mayor. If I may respond to your question regarding the air dancers?
Oh, yes.
I did have a chance to look at that quickly and grandfathering in Pennsylvania pertains to use or structures that would otherwise be prohibited by a new regulation but had existed prior. I do not believe that the law would protect air dancers.
Or signage or other kind of temporary, right? Like things that are melt structures or all built.
Signage or other kind of temporary things. I mean, if there was a, if there was a sign, well, signage, we need to look into the specifics because signage can be affixed to the property, and if we have sign ordinance, which then changes things, then that could be, that could be a different discussion based on specific factual analysis. But air dancers, things that are movable, things that you plug in and just leave on the sidewalk, those could be prohibited.
I asked the question injust, but like, but there is, you know, like, the zoning ordinance, like, the, what, we pass the first and second reading, the illumination of signs that have to be turned off, right, at the end of the night, like, that kind of thing that is not the built structure that would be grandfathered in, but that is an enforceable...
That is an enforceable provision, correct.
Because that's not changing the built structure. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim, for your quick work on that. All right.
That was all for...
Councilmember statements. I assumed that was all. Councilmember statements?
Daniel?
Daniel, conference member statements? Yes, you first, my friend. What up, Dan?
Having read over formally the pollinator garden ordinance, I'm quite optimistic about it, and I hope to see it make a bigger push for greenery amount around Meville alongside the cleanup day, May 17th. I'm really delighted to see Meville's push towards being more environmentally conscious and cleaner overall.
Jim?
Thank you. Two items. First of all, thanks to everybody who came, expressed opinions and concerns on the issues on the agenda tonight. It's always good to have public input. The other thing, I'd like to just share a couple of thoughts with you. At the end of the day, all that most of us have is the legacy is what remains. And I've known Rod Wise since high school, I won't say how many years that is. He was a police officer here in Meville for years, and in fact, he died in uniform. He was a police officer all his life. But the one thing I have to comment on with Rod is whenever his name was mentioned, the first words out of anybody's mouth were, what a nice guy, he was a good man, he was concerned and caring, he was compassionate and fair, he was a decent human being. And I'm just thinking to myself, what a hell of a legacy to leave. And our community is a little bit better, or maybe a lot better, because Rod Wise and people like him have lived here. That's all, Your Honor.
Thanks, Jim.
That's good, Jim. We should all be, we should all aspire to be Rod Wise. I mean, truly, that's a really good message. Thank you so much for coming, people are candidates also for coming, Joe for your work with the people, you know, out at Asbury Manor and for the residents for showing up. Gosh, Peter, thank you so much. I'm really glad Parky was on the agenda. You did a heck of a lot for this meeting, so thank you for all your work for these ordinances and it's all in there. Just thank you so much. And thank you, council, for really being willing to discuss and bring ideas.
Yep, I echo the thanks. It's been shared, yeah, Peter, so much, left the meat of the agenda today, including things we didn't even discuss, you know, it was a lot of stuff you brought forward and have obviously been working so hard on, so thanks for making things that I think are otherwise tough and indigestible, like, they actually do make them easier to understand, and I do appreciate that. And put a lot of thought and effort into it, and I found myself reading in particular the parking memo and thinking, wow, I'm so glad we have a planner. Like, there was just such a long time where, like, the city of Meville did not have a planner, and I think that that shows in a lot of ways, and so I just found myself being very grateful that we've got you and we've got some new decisions. I, Mike, thanks for your words and, like, thanks for your journalism. I think that Meville is lucky, not a lot of communities still have a local newspaper that's able to cover, you know, the work, what's going on in our town, to the extent that, you know, we have here with the Meville Tribune, so, you know, it's a gift and I'm grateful, and I'm grateful that you're here. I know that we tease you, including today we did, but, right, like, also you pushing for transparency, like, that's, we need that, and that's valuable, so thank you for doing that. And, and I'm, like, very glad to be on, you know, this is my sixth year on council, whatever, I don't know. And, but, but I think I have seen a shift over time where we did have, the practice was there was executive sessions and they were hours long and so much what happened there that I really believed could happen in the light of day in the public, and I'm really glad that we've been able to make that shift and that change. I think that, I see that in this council and in, like, our staff too, like, being willing to kind of, like, I know it, like, lays a lot bare, but I'm grateful that you're willing to kind of, to do that, and I think that we have made a concerted effort, so I'm proud of that. Other people should be part of this government, join an authority board or commission. We have many openings, we've got a standard process now for any Meville resident and on some authorities' boards and commissions, property owner, right, like, you might not have to live in town, depending on the makeup of that committee, look into them, please apply by April 18th. Thanks, Darla, for holding down that process, it's a lot to coordinate. We're, like, getting there, I feel like we, like, got it under control now, we, like, know how it goes, and I'm really grateful for your work there, and invite people to join and be part of the, of our local government and administering our public resources. Proud that tonight we made a move to increase housing options in Meville. AARP finds that ADUs are very favorable, they endorse them, they offer young people entry-level housing choices, they enable families to expand beyond their primary home, provide empty nesters and others with the option of moving into smaller space while renting out their larger house or letting an adult child in his or her family reside. They just increased the options for housing, which I think is important, we've heard that from our planning commission several times now. Appreciate the thought and work that's gone into preparing these updates to the zoning ordinance, and especially the fact that they are in line with our housing action plan and the desire to kind of make more affordable, dignified housing options in Meville. We moved on tobacconist in response to downtown business owners, grateful we could do that. And last, but certainly not least, grateful again for the folks from Asbury Manor for putting the public pressure on regal communities, glad that they've seen some response from that already, and glad that the city can hopefully be a partner in ensuring that they too have dignified, affordable places to live and call home. So, thanks.
Thanks, Autumn. To Jim's point, Officer Wise was actually somebody that found my nephew when he was two. He had gotten lost, went to a house, and when he said his name was Jerdy, they put it down to the police station, and because we lived next to Wise's brother, like, I grew up there, he was able to go get him and bring him home, right? It could have been a, he knocked on a door because he was lost, he had ridden his bike and knocked on the door, right, like, so, so that's the beauty of living in a small town and having really great police officers. So I believe in everything you said here and his legacy. I just thought that was a very, it's a, it's a good story, and I'll tell you more, you know, I always have words. I, yeah, I wanted to address, right, like, that we live in a community that residents who are not living in the standard that they should be, right, with dignity, can come to their council, can come to their city, ask questions and get support, and I just think that's a beautiful thing, right? And I just, I want to touch on, just to be real clear, right, that affordable housing, right, is not dirty housing, it does not mean property values will go down, it means real people need options, right? And, you know, this process was not quickly done, it was looked over by many, many, very smart people, right? And everybody in this room, especially the people who work here, are qualified and they make decisions and they give us information, and that's what we vote on, right? It is not something we think of and then we just, like, push through because that's not how government works. The people who live in the city, regardless of how much they make, are worth it, they are worth dignified living, and whatever we can do to do that is our job, right? I just needed to get that out, because to equate poor people with a certain standard of living is not real, it's not true, and it's not fair, right? And I take it very personal, my mother was always very poor, and she was good, and she was funny, and she was worth it, so I want to make that clear to us, that when we are talking about affordable living, we're talking about human beings and people that we value and that we want to be able to have opportunities, and housing is just the first step, right? So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Just kidding. Just kidding.
Can I have a second?
April 12th.
Discussion? Roll call.
Myers.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
I thought you were serious for a second.